The word says it?
Yeah.
Did those go on to other people? Blank.
Everyone should have one.
Okay, but I'm in. Okay, then.
All the commissioners should have one.
But the last one, the last set, did they go out?
Thirty seconds.
Change.
Twenty seconds.
Let me stand, you can probably do it right now. Change it, you got time.
Yeah.
Hurry up. Do it.
We want to welcome you to our Leavenworth City Commission meeting. We ask that you turn off your silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel Two at 6:00 PM and then midnight, and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
It's time we have the proclamation. Proclamation for the Leavenworth Farmers Market. The Leavenworth Farmers Market offers consumer, farm-pressed, affordable, convenient, and healthy products such as fruits, vegetables, cheese, herbs, flowers, baked goods, and meat. Farmers Market serves in integral links among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. The popularity of Farmers Markets continue to rise as more and more consumers discover the joys of shopping for unique ingredients sold directly from the farm in their freshest possible state. Farmers Market play a key role in developing local and regional food systems that support the sustainability of family farms, revitalize communities, and provide opportunities for farmers and consumers. Leavenworth Farmers Markets offers electronic benefits, transfer technology for use by supplemental nutrition-assisted program recipients in redeeming their benefits. Offers opportunities for senior citizens participating in senior Farmers Market nutrition program to redeem their checks and provide them sold produce to community free food programs. The United States Department of Agriculture strongly supports and promotes the development of operation and expansion of Farmers Markets and other direct-to-consumers marketing activities for agriculture producers, providing them with marketing opportunities. I, Jermaine Bosse, Mayor of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby recognize Farmers Market and the contribution farmers make to daily life in America and give notice to our citizens that August 6th through August 12th, 2023 is hereby proclaimed Leavenworth Farmers Market Elite.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the body, Parks Department, city manager. You guys have all given us so much support and leeway in letting Leavenworth Farmers Market become one of the larger producer-only markets in the Kansas City metro area. It means a lot to me, my vendors, and my consumers that you guys have always continually supported us. I think the proclamation said everything that I could possibly say. I would just add our hours are Wednesday mornings, 8:00 AM to noon, and Saturday mornings, 7:00 AM to noon. On Wednesday, we always do a kid-friendly activity, so with the crazy heat we're having tomorrow, we're giving them free popsicles, so bring your kids out. Watermelon season's about to start, so everyone's excited for that on Saturday, so. Thank you all again.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes from July 11th, 2023. There's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve minutes from July 11th, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, new business, this is open for the public comments. Anyone to be honest wish to address the commission?
Yes, we have Brian Markle.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brian Markle, 1529 Franklin Street. And I'm a grateful believer in this Christ who has found freedom from alcohol.
Amen.
I thank you guys, entire board, this entire council for the opportunity to share with you today about a Christ-centered recovery program that has changed not only my life, but millions of lives. Celebrate Recovery. Celebrate Recovery is a Christ-centered, non-denominational, 12-step program for those dealing with any sort of hurt, habit, or hang-up. This can include struggles like with relationships, anger, food, sex, pornography, drugs, alcohol, finances, gambling, self-injury, family dysfunction, and the effects of past abuse and more. We meet one night a week, Friday nights, here in a local church. And each night consists of a large group meeting with worship and lesson or testimony. And then we break into gender-specific smoke rooms to share specific. We maintain a safe environment by adhering to our five small-group guidelines, which is there for anonymity and confidentiality. Is there a need in Leavenworth? I've lived here for almost 45 years and been part of the business community, and of course went to high school here in all my younger years. And I say resoundly yes, there's a need. A lot of hurting people out in our community. Our number-one goal is to create a safe environment for people that have any type of hurt, hang-up, or habit that can come, heal, and gain back their sanity and their life. We consider anonymity and confidentiality with those who attend essential for this program to work. CR, or Celebrate Recovery, is not meant to be a journey that a person walks alone. Community is essential. And there's some facts I would like to share with you about Celebrate Recovery. Our program has been in the community active for about a year and a half now, approaching two years at the end of this year. We start every year. But we've done numerous step studies, which is a further education into the recovery process for the individuals that participate. And I have to say that our numbers agree with the national numbers of what Celebrate Recovery does in the community. And I have to point out that only one-third of its participants attend because of alcohol or drug use. There's other struggles that people deal with. They all have hurts that we've carried with us our entire life. CR, or Celebrate Recovery, is represented in dozens of countries around the world. Millions of people have been through this program and received life-changing healing. And Celebrate Recovery can also be found in over 38,000 churches. And now Leavenworth has a registered Celebrate Recovery that has access to anyone who's in the community. People that are traveling from other states can find us on a national website that can find the location and time of the meet. And we just build each other in relationships through healing together. I'm going to quote from the Book of James, Chapter Five, Verse 16. Therefore confess your sins to each other and pray for each other, so that you may be healed. The prayer of a righteous person is powerful and effective. Thank you again for your time. Please ask me if you have any information or if I have information I can give to you tonight, or I'll have some cards too, if you'd like to have that in your back pocket.
Thank you for coming up, Brian.
Ryan, what is a contact, because we're on TV here. What's the contact? Either website or phone number or what?
To reach out.
To reach out.
10-4. We have, we are listed through our church on the website. Am I allowed to say that?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, it's Westside Family Church of Leavenworth.
Okay.
There's many websites that support Westside, but they're in Kansas City as well, but Leavenworth specifically. And if you're looking for help in any way, form, you'll find our contact information there. Also, we are gender-specific too. Men only speak with men, women only speak with women. Myself and my wife are ministry leaders for this group, so if you want to call us directly, you can do that. Can I give out phone numbers too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
My phone number for the men is (913) 290-0209. And Carol's number, my wife, is (913) 306-3243.
Great.
We'd be happy to have any word of that anytime.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ryan. You said Friday at Westside, what time?
Friday at 6:30 at Westside Family Church.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, a public hearing for unsafe fire damage structures, 707 Pawnee Street.
We'll receive an update from Halberdett, Chief Building Inspector, and open a public hearing.
Okay.
Motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 (inaudible).
Aye.
Public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're pretty familiar with this process lately. 707 Pawnee is a house that was damaged by fire in March 29th of this year. At the time that I wrote this policy report, I had spoken with the owner and they had not decided where they were going to demolish or repair. I just received a phone call yesterday from the current owner that says that he is selling the property. I asked for someone to be here, I'm not seeing anyone in the audience tonight.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
We don't, we don't have anyone.
My policy report suggested that we give them 30 days to start the demolition process or start the repair process, and I had planned on bringing it back to you in 30 days at that time, you know, to give you an update. But whatever you all choose to do, I still think that may not be a bad idea.
Yeah.
In 30 days, they plan on closing, I think it was the end of this week or first part of next week.
With new owners, right? So we don't have.
And I haven't spoken with the new owner, I've only spoken with the gentleman who's getting ready to sell the property.
Under this, since this is the first time it's come up, you do at least have to provide it at a statute a reasonable time for repairs to take place. So whatever that is.
Whoever it is.
That might have some discretion, but you cannot, at this point, you know, you have to at least provide a time.
So you're requesting 30 days just to review it, to see where we're currently at, or?
I, my policy report, and I think the resolution says 30 days to start the demolition process or beginning repairs.
Okay.
And at that time, we would bring it back to you for an update.
Yeah, I think the value of 30 days is we just don't even know what the plans are.
Yeah.
You know, you don't want to give 90 days, because, you know, so if we can get them in here in 30 days, and at that point, if the new owner elects not to come, then I think a small timeframe would be good, but that gives them a chance to close and they come in and meet with the commission.
All right.
I think that's all right.
Remember, under these processes, you know, once you give this 30 days, if that is not done, technically staff can't commence the demolition process from that point. Now, staff is advising you that they're going to come and give you an update on that, but that's the way these resolutions work, is that you provide that time and let it just be done. And if it's not, then you are authorizing the city to undertake the demolition.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
So before we take any action, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carried, five zero. A public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to direct the staff to come back to 30 days with an update?
I move to direct the staff to go ahead and give the owner and/or the new owner 30 days to begin repairs or begin demolition.
Okay, so is that going to be a change to the way the resolution is worded? Or are you not passing on the resolution? You have a resolution in your packet that provides that there's 30 days for repair removal, and then it provides a comment that, you know, the city commission will be able to continue to review it, but that is probably extra language. So it depends on what you want to do. If you want to not take any action on this that would allow the city to do demolition, then we'd have to probably revise this resolution on the fly in some way.
Well, are we, I'm asking, 30 days to begin repair?
Well, 30 days to bring us an update if you don't know what's going on. I thought that's what we were aiming for.
So if you do repair, and then he comes back and says they're not repairing, then we can take another action at that time?
I think we just approve the resolution as it's written.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the way it was written is failure to diligently prosecute the same to completion, to commence it, and failure to prosecute it within that timeframe.
Okay.
Okay.
I withdrew my motion.
So if you're in agreement with the resolution the way it's worded, then you should make a motion to approve Resolution Number B 2341.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution B 2341 as written.
Second.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Nancy Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder. Aye.
Thank you.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, four one. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mayor's appointment. I move to appoint to the Board of Zoning Appeals David Ramirez to an unexpired term ending May 1st, 2025, and to appoint Daniel Bowling to an unexpired term ending May 1st, 2026. Reappoint to the Community Development Advisory Board Charles Davis, Sister Paula Rose.
Yarnick.
Yarnick, Brian Keely, and Mike Soufer to terms ending August 31st, 2026, and appoint to the Leavenworth Planning Commission Mary Ann Neeland to an unexpired term ending May 1st, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, five zero. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for shingle roof replacement at Riverfront Community Center.
This item will be handled by Steve Grant, the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor and Commissioners, good evening, good evening, good night. This is for the community center, replacing the asphalt shingle portion of the building. I know everyone's familiar with the Riverfront Community Center. It's basically the center two-thirds of the facility. The asphalt shingles cover the women's waiting room, the men's waiting room, the entrance and foyer area, as well as the south wing portion of the facility. It's not your standard roofing project. Replacing shingles and the underlayment sounds really easy, however, as I know everybody's aware, the facility is on the National Risher Historic Places, and has, which brings a lot of different intricate items into this bid and into this project. For example, of course, the asphalt shingles and underlayment will be replaced, however, there's copper ridge that runs along the top of the community center that will be removed and reinstalled. The original copper guttering is still in place, that will remain in place, and it will be cleaned. And then, as part of this project, to make sure everything is airtight and leak-proof, we will come in with copper gutter lining that will go underneath the edge of the shingles and go down into the copper gutters, so that they will remain in the state that they're in now. None of that will be visible from the outside, so that's one additional aspect on this. Also as well, on the community center, there are six different sections of guttering that is not copper, it's galvanized metal. Those will be replaced with copper guttering to match the existing historic aspect. So quite a lot going into this project. It's, those are the original asphalt shingles that were put on there when the building was repurposed in the mid to late 80s, so they're 35 years old. They are quite warm. We see, for the most part, it seems to be pretty much leak-proof, but you do see some signs of water here and there damaged potentially, so as part of this bid, we've included a 10% contingency in case we come across rotted, you know, nothing major, just rotted decking and stuff like that, we're able to have some funds. We don't anticipate too much, but we wanted to put that in there in case we come across rotted decking and fascia board and things like that. So with that, I put together bids facts with all the different aspects for the facility. We opened bids on Tuesday, July 19th, and as I mentioned, bidders were instructed to add to their base bid 10% contingency for that. Our little bid on the project was from American Roofing here in Leavenworth with the base bid of amount of $272,337, adding the 10% contingency for a total bid of $299,570. In the 2023 CIP, we have $252,000 allocated for this project. There are sufficient funds available from other net savings on some other parks projects we've had in the CIP this year that'll give us enough money to cover up to the base bid. In discussions with Robert, our finance director, we talked about, should we get into that contingency, we can look at scaling back future projects in the community center. The easiest one for that is the lighting project we have next year. We'd be able to just kind of scale some of that back. However, we are also applying for tax credits for, since this is a rehabilitation on historic side, and we have had success getting tax credits and able to sell those on the community center in the past. We anticipate the possibility of getting up to $81,000 in tax credits back on that, which will obviously cover a lot of the overage and also even provide more ease on the CIP for the overall city's capital improvement program. So that's kind of the financials of it. With that, staff recommends the bid from American Roofing. We've utilized them before, they did the flat roof over the river view room three or four years ago when we did that, and we were really happy with their work, and they've done work throughout the city in the past. So we recommend the little bid, the amount of, not to exceed, $299,000, $299,570.
Just a couple of quick notes, we received well over $100,000 in tax credits when we did the stone replacement project, so we are familiar with this at the staff level. We fully expect to receive the $81,000 in tax credits. As a matter of fact, I just signed the application today. The application was put together by a city planner who previously worked in the State Historic Preservation Office, so this is the amount. You never know until you get it, but we fully expect to receive those tax credits based on previous history and the building and the process that we're familiar with.
Good.
Is there some reason why the delta was like almost twice as much?
Yeah, I noticed that.
I'm not sure on the actually about it, the bidding landscape, maybe they didn't want it.
That's what it sounds like.
They've been on city projects before, I think sometimes they want to do a good faith effort to show that they want to continue to be, you know, be involved in our bid process there for the city, which is a good thing. Yeah, and then it's, we're seeing with a lot of our bids, we're in the middle of the year, and people have a lot already on their plate and already scheduled.
Makes sense.
Yeah, so that's our best guess on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, there's no other questions or comments. Entertainer motion.
I'm happy to move to approve the American Roofing Company Inc. of Leavenworth, Kansas to accomplish this roofing in the amount of, not to exceed, $299,570.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 (inaudible). Aye.
Motion carried, five zero. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, consider award of a bid for sports field trail repairs.
We can hear you. This will be the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Brian Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Today I bring before you the Sports Field Trail Repairs. In 2011, our Sports Field complex was built. The trails run behind Sports Field Number Four, Sports Field Number Three, back along behind our maintenance building, and Sports Field Number Two. The section I want to talk to you today about is behind Sports Field Three and Four and the maintenance building that leads to the parking lot as well. This section of the trail is how we bring in all of our parks equipment, our ballfield materials, our concession stand items, and equipment to service the field. So over the time of this happening, the base on this trail has fallen apart, the subgrades deteriorated due to that and, you know, the freezing and thawing throughout the winters. So it's starting to fail significantly. We put it together and solicit bids for the Sports Field Trail Project. Plans were made and made available, and a mandatory pre-bid meeting was conducted. The bids were read on July 18th, and two bidders, two bids were received. One was from Barclay Asphalt, an amount of $70,925, with $115 alternate, ad alternate. And the other one was from Baker Construction for an amount of $68,646, and $103.75 ad alternate. So this project consists of a couple portions here, I'm going to show you on our PowerPoint. Don't have the mouse on there. So you can see the red line in the corner of the parking lot, you can see the other red line on the other end of the screen, and then a red line right there by the Sports Field Maintenance Building. That's a whole section of trail that's going to be replaced. Where you see the two blue lines, that section's going to be concrete, the rest will be asphalt. Two reasons for the concrete and asphalt, the concrete in that area will help shore up the stability of the trail. We think it'll be a better suited for that area because we have problems in that area because it's so close to the creek line and the fence line as well. The rest will be an asphalt trail, and it'll match the same size that we have there. So there's going to be 395 feet, 10-foot wide asphalt trail, along with 150 feet, 10-foot wide asphalt trail. And we expect this work to be done about 120 days after we give the notice to proceed. So here is a few other pictures of what the trail currently looks like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the picture on the right is our problem area, and that is the area where we'll be adding the concrete instead of asphalt. As you can see there, we have asphalt, and we're having some failures with it due to the base. The one on the left is in a similar area, then you can see there on the right where we store our ballfield materials. The asphalt trail over there starts to get a little bit better, and that's kind of the area where the concrete will stop. The little area where the fence is will be replaced up to the gate, and then on down on the other picture, down to about where that mower is in the background, is where the new repairs will stop. So. So staff recommends the base bid for Baker Construction for a total not to exceed $68,646. There is $62,100 allocated in the capital CIP program for the Sports Fields Trails, and the remaining $6,546 will come out of the reserves in the CIP Sales Tax Fund. Do you guys have any questions?
The only other thing I'll note is, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong, I was here when this was built. Originally, we were going to bring in all the equipment through the main gate between the fields, and shortly after it was built, a couple of years, it was decided that it's much better to take it on the outside with the maintenance building there on the north side, so the interior drive is actually concrete, and it was built to sustain that. This outside was never really meant to handle that level of weight, but it's just so much more conducive to bring the work trucks and the trailers and everything there on the north side. So we've been, I think we've had this in the works for five or six years.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. There's no questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the base bid from Baker Construction, Inc., for a total amount not to exceed $68,646.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for Park Sidewalk Improvement Project.
This will be Brian continuing with this, and this is one we're pretty excited about, as you can tell by the pictures, some much needed work.
For sure.
Once again, thank you. I bring to you the Park Sidewalk Improvement Project. Many of our parks have sidewalks that run adjacent to the streets, going around the parks, going through the parks. Over the years, the sidewalks have endured many winters of freezing and thawing, causing them to crack, heave, buckle and deteriorate. These parks include 10th Avenue Park, David Brewer Park, Landing Park, Haymarket Square and two locations along Arbor Way, which is along Fourth Street. Parks Department or the City of Leavenworth solicited bids in a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Bids were open on July 14th and we had one bidder that we received bids from. That was Baker Construction in the amount of $86,315. The work for this project will include sidewalks, ADA ramps, curb and gutter, and this work is to be completed within 90 days after the notice to proceed is given. So let me give you a few ideas on what our sidewalks look like that we're going to replace. 10th Avenue Park is where we hold our Easter recon. We have soccer going on and some other events out there. This is close to some of our practice fields in our parking lot. This area has had some troubles for quite a while and it's heaving and the curb's blown out and the sidewalks vary uneven and it causes a lot of hazards for park patrons.
Definitely.
This is still at 10th Avenue Park. So across from where I just showed you those pictures, there's a piece of sidewalk where the, it's heaved up and it's heaved up almost two foot. You don't see that in this one picture where it's number three, but it's very bad. This is, the left picture is the, our bridge that goes over the creek and it links you to the other side of our practice fields and wheelchairs and it's not, it's supposed to be accessible and it's not because you cannot get wheelchairs over the humps to where the concrete's falling. This is an ADA approach coming off our streets. So it's obviously not wheelchair accessible, it's falling apart. And these are just sample pictures of what the others look like. So we have many there. David Brewer Park.
A quick question, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Would the repairs affect that bridge any?
No, the bridge will be fine. It's just bringing the sidewalk back up to where it needs to be so wheelchairs can go across smoothly. Yep. And it takes away a tripping hazard.
Yeah, thanks.
So this is David Brewer Park. These are sidewalks within our park. As you can see, there's a tube that goes under two of those locations. The tubes are in good shape, the sidewalks are not. So we'll be getting those back into place. Picture where you see number six, that's just outside of our park shelter there at Brewer Park. Over the years, we had to cut out a piece of sidewalk because it was so bad, so the piece of steel plate was put over it to make it useful. And then as you can see in picture eight, it's just heaving up and thawing of the winter project or the winter freezes. Landing Park's where we hold Camp Leavenworth. We also have many weddings and venues throughout that park. There's not a ton of stuff to be done here, but the areas that need to be done are important. And so that's all I have for pictures. Like I said, not every location is on that slide and not every piece of sidewalk on there. Those are just examples of what we're looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Brian.
Staff recommends the base bid for the total to not exceed $86,315. There was $39,600 allocated in the 2023 capital improvement program for this project and the remaining $46,715 will come out of the street CIP sidewalk program. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? Commissioner Martin?
No, nothing at this point. Thank you.
Nope. There's none. Now entertain a motion.
I move, I move the base, approval of the base bid from Baker Construction for a total amount not to exceed $86,315 for the sidewalk, these sidewalk improvements.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next item on the agenda, consider award of bid for replacement of control panels at three lift stations.
Brian Faust, Public Works Director, will handle the next two items and I do think we have Tim Gordato and John Limke from Wastewater.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As mentioned, the item this evening is to consider replacement of three lift station control panels that are becoming obsolete. For background information, the lift stations are used to move raw sewage from holding tanks through wells, through the force mains from low-lying areas of the city. Basically, it lifts it up to our gravity mains so that it can transport the raw sewage to our wastewater treatment plant. As the parts for the control panels become obsolete, it takes an extensive amount of time to find and reconfigure new parts so they can talk to the old parts. City currently has four main lift stations. Three of them are older. One of them was installed back in, okay.
2011.
And that one's in good shape. The three older lift stations are the Select Lift Station, the Hallmark Lift Station and the VA Lift Station. The city did request quotes for replacement of the three control panels. We got three quotes. The low bid was from Allied Systems Incorporated for $45,358.81. Allied has provided parts for WPC for several years and their local representative is actually from the St. Joe area. The 2023 CIP contains $80,000 for replacement of the three control panels. The total cost for the panels is less than the budgeted amount. The VA has also been informed of the need for the replacement and there is an agreement in place with the VA that the City of Leavenworth will maintain the lift station. However, the VA is responsible for reimbursing the city for need repairs. While the city will pay for the panels initially, the VA will reimburse the city in an amount of approximately $14,000. City staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase and replacement bid from Allied Systems Incorporated for the replacement of the three control panels for the Select VA and Hallmark Lift Stations for an amount not to exceed $45,358.81. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
No.
If not, entertain a motion.
I move to purchase and replacement bid from Allied Systems Incorporated for the replacement of the three control panels for the Select VA and Hallmark Lift Stations for an amount not to exceed $45,358.81.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider design build agreement for fire station number three and WPC admin offices.
Brian?
The stated this item is to consider the design build agreement with Julius Cause Construction for the design and construction of Fire Station Three and the WPC administrative offices. For 2023 and 2024, the city programs the replacement of Fire Station Three due to the age of the structure, energy inefficiencies and to accommodate larger trucks, along with ADA and gender-based requirements. In addition to the fire station, the assessment of our wastewater treatment plant indicated a need to construct new WPC admin offices outside of the press building. The city did solicit qualifications from design build teams that were interested in these two projects. Design builds where both the designer and construction contractor are part of the same team that works together for cost-effective design and a built structure. It's different than what you're used to seeing, which is more of a design, then bid, then build project. The two design build teams had made presentations to the commission on March 21st and then on April 4th, there was a consensus by the commission to negotiate with the design build team led by Julius Cause Construction. The main team members for this design build effort are Julius Cause Construction Company, WSKF Architects, McClure Engineering, PKMR Engineers and Laino King. There are several project milestones identified in the agreement. Preliminary design and cost estimate is due in late August. Final schematic design and cost estimate around October 20th and then submission of a design build proposal November 1st of 2023. The city did budget 4.1 million in the 2023 CIP for this project. The proposed 2024 CIP includes 4.5 million for the fire station funded through bond proceeds and an additional $775,000 for the wastewater administration offices from the sewer fund. This agreement is between the city and Julius Cause and is the beginning of the process. Exhibit A is included in your packet is the actual design build amendment and that will come back to the commission probably in November. This amendment will define the cost for the design and actual construction of the project. Staff recommends the commission approve the agreement between the city and Julius Cause Construction and authorize the mayor to sign both the agreement and exhibit B. Exhibit B is, deals with bonds and insurance requirements. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
No.
No? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agreement between the city and Julius Cause Construction and authorize the mayor's, mayor to sign the agreement.
Thanks, Jeff.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Thank you. First consideration ordinance for special use permit at 500 and 502 Pawnee Street to allow two family dwelling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a request for a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in the R16 zoning district at 500 and 502 Pawnee Street. This is an existing two-family dwelling. Two-family dwellings are not allowed by right in single-family zoning districts. They require a special use permit. We have a number of existing non-conforming uses like this around town. Nothing is required by the city. Those can continue to exist without any sort of approval or change. What we're finding though is that lending institutions have changed their practices in the last couple of years and when someone goes to purchase a non-conforming structure, whether it be a non-conforming use like a duplex in a single family or there be some non-conforming setback issues, anything like that, we're finding that banks are not always wanting to lend on those properties if they could not be rebuilt as is in a zoning district. So what we're finding is a lot of property owners are starting to come in needing to get special use permits on these properties that are otherwise existing just fine, they're existing non-conforming uses. We don't require anything, but in order to sell them for a purchaser to get financing on it, they have to get a special use permit for it to be considered conforming so that it, we could say, yes, this could be rebuilt if it was destroyed by fire. So that's what the case is. For this one and the second one that's on your agenda, this property owner has a number of duplexes in town and he's preparing to sell them as he's getting out of the business of being a property manager and is just looking to make these conforming. So there's nothing changing with this property at 500 and 502 Shawnee, just getting the special use permit so that it could be considered conforming for lending purposes so that he can sell it.
Pawnee, not Shawnee.
Sorry if I said Shawnee. So Planning Commission did consider this at the July 10th meeting and voted to recommend unanimous approval of this. We sent out notifications per state statute to property owners within 200 feet and received no questions or comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I noticed these and the other two are, they're not that old. I was thinking of the little bitty duplexes that go all along Pawnee and Dakota, but these are, these are the newer ones and they still, when they built them, they still didn't have to be zoned when they...
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what year these were built. I can't speak to what was allowed before I was here. I didn't even see record of a building permit in our records, so I'm not sure exactly what year they were constructed. But again, we've got a number of these non-conforming ones in town and...
So anytime, anytime a duplex is sold and it's not, it's one of these in like that neighborhood, you have to go through this process over and over again?
Potentially. It depends on the bank that's being used or if there's a purchaser that's a cash buyer, they're not going to need this. We've, we haven't had a ton of these, but we've had a handful in the last couple of years.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Can we expect the same, the same request on 416 Kiowa, 418 Kiowa and 424 Kiowa?
Were those the ones mentioned in his letter? So yes, if you looked in your packet, Mr. Curry, the owner on these, he had submitted five different properties. The three that are on Kiowa, the 416, 418 and 424, after he submitted his letter, we took a look, those are actually in our north neighborhood overlay district, which covers this northeast area of town, has a little bit different use regulations for what's allowed by right and what's not.
Okay.
So it's, those properties are also zoned, single-family residential. However, that overlay district allows two-family dwellings in that area by right. The intent of that overlay district is to provide some more housing diversity in the area for folks and so those ended up not needing a special use permit because we were able to write that zoning verification letter for the title search on this that yes, that could be rebuilt if it were destroyed by fire without any sort of variance.
Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. Entertain a motion.
We just need consensus.
I mean consensus. You got a consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Next item on the agenda, first consideration ordinance, special use permit for 507 and 509 Pawnee.
Okay, this is exactly the same. It's the same owner, it's right across the street from the previous one, just an existing two-family property that they're requesting a special use to make it conforming to prepare it for sale.
Do you have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Same thing.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Staff report, Police Department. Mr. Chief, welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I think on the inaugural staff report, we were talking about that this morning. I'm here to brief you tonight and update you on some difficulties that we've had and then some progress we've had on police cars. Just as a reminder, several years ago, the City of Leavenworth, including the Police Department, entered into an agreement with enterprise leasing for leasing of city vehicles, which includes police cars, okay? As part of that, that also includes the police cars. And so when I make that reference, I'm talking about the black and white police cars with the sirens or the all-black ones that we use for patrol functions. Those, in the Police Department, there are 24 of those, okay? On average, every year, pretty consistently, we replaced four police cars and we cycled them in and took the oldest four police cars and cycled them out. So we continued that as part of the leasing program, okay? However, we experienced quite a bit of difficulties with police cars. So for example, in 2022, we ordered four police cars, four Ford Interceptors, the SUVs. We waited about six months and out of nowhere, those, that order was canceled by the car manufacturers. No police departments across the country, all across the country had orders canceled. And so those four cars that we would have received and cycled through in our normal thing, they never happened. So the new year came in 2023, we ordered a total of eight, four from the previous year and four more. We waited a while and those never came in either. Those again were the Ford Interceptors. If you might remember, they announced that they are no longer producing, after this year, they are no longer producing the Dodge Charger Police Car. So we... So, we were switching to the SUV, right? Remember that? So, we were eight cars behind with no end in sight in terms of being able to get that number of Ford Interceptors. So, we sat down, and we changed our plan. We really needed to start seeing new cars come in because that was a problem. The fleet, we were having eight cars that should have been replaced, the mechanical bills were going, and that sort of thing, we were really having some difficulty. So, we changed our strategy and said, okay, if we can't get Ford Interceptors, let's get whatever it is that we can get and make do, because we really needed those cars replaced. So, Enterprise Leasing was able to find eight cars. They were able to find six Dodge Durangos, which is an SUV produced by the Dodge, that's a police, police package SUV. They did find one Ford SUV, and then they found one last remaining 2023 Dodge Charger police car. So, Enterprise Leasing has found those cars, they've identified them, we are scheduled to have them delivered at some point in the relatively near future. So, we're caught up in terms of the cars from 2022 and 2023, and the total number is eight. Now, the second half of the equation is that, as part of the Enterprise Leasing Program, they have vendors as part of the entire package that will take the old police car, take all of the stuff off of it, the lights, the sirens, the cages, and all of that stuff. We will get new equipment and put, and give that to them, and they will do it. So, that was all part of the lease package, all part of the lease programming, and so we have reached that point where we have eight cars coming, but we're going to get a pretty significant bill to buy the equipment for the new eight cars, have the old equipment removed, and the new equipment installed. And so, the total allocation that will be coming from mostly the vendor called 911 Custom, likely, is the company that has a relationship with Enterprise Leasing that they employ to do that for us, okay? And that total is $186,201.44, okay? That's how much that will be. Money has been in the CIP allocations in 2022 and 2023 to do that. It's just been sitting there as, again, as part of the broader Enterprise Leasing Program that's all included. And so, we had a meeting, because we weren't exactly sure what the mechanics were, to report that to you. The allocation is all part of the Enterprise Leasing Agreement. It's been two years, we haven't spent any money, so it was our recommendation, myself, the Finance Director, and Ms. Holler, who does the Enterprise Leasing liaison for the city, we agreed that this was the best way to tell you that we're just about to be caught up on police cars, but now we have to spend money that's sort of been sitting around for a couple of years, and that's such a unique circumstance since we've had such difficulty over these last two years. So, that's why I'm here tonight, is a staff report, to tell you that we're going to get eight new cars and cycle those out. That will catch us back up from the previous two years that we've been behind, and the allocation of the $186,000 is designed to do all of the things necessary to get the old cars out of the fleet and the new cars in the fleet, and hopefully back on schedule with the average of about four cars a year moving forward. And so, I'll answer whatever questions that you might have from that, since it's a little complicated.
Yeah, so is there a chance of another cancellation?
Well, there is, but I don't think so. We, I'm comfortable that when Enterprise, the people for Enterprise say, hey, we have a car for you, then they're typically coming through with that, but they've, when they've said, we're still looking, we're waiting, we can't get commitments, then we, that's when we were really, you know, pausing our, you know, our optimism. Okay, but they've said they have them, they're on the way, and they've, when they've gotten to that point, I'm pretty comfortable that they've delivered. With a small chance, maybe not, but I'm hopeful. I'm optimistic.
So, just say if we don't get the cars, then what?
Keeps driving the old ones.
I'm going to be back and visit you. We may have to buy some cars that are unique. You probably have seen some agencies driving Ford pickup trucks. The Sheriff's Department has some, I think Lansing has some, some of the agencies in Kansas City, the 435 Loop, have been buying trucks to do that. I don't want to do that, but I also don't want the cops to walk, so we're optimistic, but we're, in the back of our minds, we'll do something else. We really have to have a reliable fleet where the cars are functioning and that sort of thing, and so we'll figure out an alternative if we have to. We'll do something, but hopefully, I think, I think we're in pretty good shape and pretty optimistic, we're going to get caught back up.
Okay. I appreciate it, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any voices?
No. You said six Durangos, one Charger, and what was the other one?
A Ford SUV. The Ford Interceptor is what it's called, but it's an SUV, a Ford Explorer.
It's a Explorer.
Right, yes, sir.
Thank you. Good.
When, when is the timeline that you're expecting it?
I don't know that I've seen anything like that, but I'm assured that they're identified in route, and so what I expect is, like, the Durangos are going to show up from a different place and, you know, that kind of thing. So, I think, I'm thinking 30 to 45 days, hopefully, something like that. We'll see.
Good.
What about next year? Any prognosis? What are we looking at? Okay, here we go.
How about I get through this one before I forget about what's next year?
Let them get those vehicles first.
Right. We'll see how it goes. We'll see how it goes. We're going to order them and see what happens, so. The mix is the unique part, the Dodges, the Durangos, it's a little bit of a mix, but we, you know, we had to, we had to do something, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate the report.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, a consensus agenda.
Oh, yeah. I move to approve claims for July 8th, 2023, through July 21st, 2023, in the amount of $823,072.17. Net amount for payroll number 14, effective July 14th, 2023, in the amount of $405,150.20. No police and fire pension.
Second.
A motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 5-0. Thanks. Before we adjourn the meeting, we'll go around the table, starting with our city managers with any updates.
All right, nothing tonight.
Commissioner Martin?
Oh, yeah.
Nope, nothing tonight. Hope everybody has a great week.
No, I have nothing.
I have a recommendation. Want to go see a good movie? Go see Sound of Freedom. It's a very good movie.
I keep hearing that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowden?
Well, I just, this hot weather and everything, everybody be careful, make sure you get hydrated. I just, we have been so fortunate, so blessed to have decent, pretty decent weather. I mean, in the summertime, we always get up in the 90s or close to 100, but not, not, we're not going through right now what so many other people are going through with 115, 120 degrees, so, anyway, just everybody be careful out there.
Thank you. I just want to say God bless, and special prayer for you and our community.
Amen.
This time, motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Bass, meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.